Trying to rock and roll here. Yep, okay. Okay. Good evening. The planning board meeting will begin at about 7:00 on Tuesday. What's today's date? March 2nd?
Third.
Third. Oh, that's the second. Yes, today's the third. I've totally lost track of everything today, so... Let's see. Our first item is going to be an A&R for 16 Berry Street. What's up with that one, Jean?
This A&R is associated with the comprehensive special permit that was issued recently for 16 Berry Street. Eric Lott is here to walk you through the plan. If I can bring it up here.
Can we see it?
Yep.
I always love A&Rs, so...
I hope you can see it.
Good evening. Eric Lott from North Andover Holdings.
Hi.
I actually didn't bring a big copy of the plan. I hope we had it tonight.
I have a big copy, but for some reason this is not open.
But I can give you a brief...
Well, let's see, because we're going to, very narrowly, you know, when we're doing A&R, it's going to be very narrow scope what we're going to concentrate on, so... We approved the subdivision, so that's probably what we're doing, so...
So this is the 40B project that received a comprehensive special permit?
Right, yeah. But I mean, right now, I suspect the reason why we're seeing this is this is what was approved for the subdivision. In other words... Well, maybe you could explain. Maybe I should just defer to you, and you could tell us what you're trying to do.
Be happy to, Mr. Chairman. After the... As part of the comprehensive permit, and part of the feedback from a lot of the neighbors out there, there's a curve on Berry Street. It's actually two issues with Berry Street, as everybody knows. It's an old cow path, so it's very narrow. And as you come into the street, it's at a 45-degree angle, so cars come down 114 at 45 miles an hour, and they can continue right down Berry Street at 45 miles an hour with no slowdown. So in speaking with the town engineer and with MassDOT, they would much rather have seen that intersection, the intersection of Berry Street and 114, be a 90-degree intersection. And the second part of our improvements to Berry Street that we agreed to was taking some of the curves off the curve you see a little bit further down Berry Street, past the driveway we're looking at, because it's a fairly blind curve, and also the trees and the stone wall that's there is pretty close. And as you plow snow in the winter, people are inching more and more into the middle of the road to try to get around there. So we agreed to do two things. We agreed to make the intersection of 114 a 90-degree turn, and we agreed to give some of the land further down the street to take some of the curves off the curve, to essentially flatten that curve out, move some of the trees back. So this A&R plan is to deed two pieces of our land to the town so that the roadway would be within the town's ownership. So it really didn't have to do with subdivision.
Questionably, what we're seeing here doesn't show any of that.
Where is it on this one?
I think in the...
It's this portion right here. It's this little... These little chunks right here.
They're located in A5 and A1. They are pretty small.
Oh.
Where's the 90-degree going to be?
Right.
Right there?
Yeah.
But now I'm... What exactly are we trying to sign off on? What's the lot lines before, and what are the lot lines after? That's the only thing we really need to look at. And this doesn't really explain that very well at all.
Right. That's a good question.
Because usually what we do is, like, if we have a large parcel, I think it's broken into maybe two, they say the old lot line and then the new lot lines, and we say the parcel. And a note, the parcel that was this is divided into these two things, so we can see exactly what it is.
Sure.
Or the other thing that we typically see is, like, the lot line change, and the thing will draw the old lot lines and the new lot lines, and so we can actually see in the parcels are labeled here. I can't tell what the before and after is.
Right. It's a little confusing. Whereas this parcel, A5, one of the ones that would be granted, is only 732 square feet, so it's maybe eight or 10 feet in depth, right along that curvature. The piece that's up by Route 114 is a larger...
So the solid line represents the after?
Well, you're going to have to, frankly, you're going to have to come back with something that explains it.
With a different plan?
Yeah. Because this doesn't... I mean, the problem is, it's not clear what we'd be signing off. Because are you keeping all these other lots? Or are you... It would seem to me that you have to create one big lot. You have to eliminate all these individual lot lines, create something that goes with the outer perimeter of the parcel, and then you change it.
Sure. Right now, there are actually... There's two large parcels, one of which we own and one of which the Fiore family owns, which we'll be purchasing. And then there's two small residential parcels, which are where the log cabins are, further down Berry Street. But there aren't, you know, this large amount of lots, like you're seeing along here.
But the problem is, this plan shows, like, Lot 1A, Lot 2A, Lot 3A, and I don't think you want any of those lots to exist.
Right.
This looks to me like it was the plan, because before the 40B got built, the subdivision was approved on the property.
Right.
And this looks to me like it's the plan for the subdivision.
It is.
So how many lots are you going to end up with, then? When you... Or maybe the question is, when you submitted to the ZBA, what was the lot?
We had two lots. It was 26.98 acres comprised of two lots. The two log cabin lots weren't included, so they were part of the original subdivision, but they weren't included. The rest of the subdivision lots were subsumed. I guess they were never actually divided. You approved the subdivision, but the land was never actually divided. So we basically scrapped the subdivision plan and went forward.
No, you did, but did this ever get recorded?
No.
So what's the recorded plan for the... That's what you've got to give us. This... You can't... We can't approve this, because you don't want this. You don't want all these... We would be approving creating all these other lots.
Well, okay. I guess I was under the assumption that you'd be approving what the application asked, not necessarily the plan, but you need...
If this is the plan that's... I don't know what's in the application. So if this is the only thing we have, this is not what we should be approving.
So we're showing... Asking for parcels X and parcels A1 through A5, showing on the attached plan to be deeded to the town of North Andover for realignment. I guess we're not asking for the entire plan to be... But you want to see a clean plan with only those?
Yeah, because this is going to create, I mean, some confusion. And I think when the smoke clears, I think you're going to have to redo this plan anyway, because you've got to eliminate all these individual lots.
Yeah. I don't know why our engineer put that on here, because in any of our plans to the ZBA that went along with the 40B, we never used the previous subdivision plan with all these extra lots on there. So I don't know why he went back to this.
Yeah.
But yeah, let me have him go back and redo that.
If you could.
For clarity's sake.
And I would say, you know, I mean, I don't think this is a big deal, and we want to take care of it as quickly as possible, so it's nothing. But the only thing that I would say is that we would ask you to withdraw this application, replace it with another application. And, you know, the only vote I would take is to accept the withdrawal of this form A without prejudice.
Sure.
If you wouldn't mind doing that.
We'd be happy to do that and come back with a new one.
Yeah. So I don't know, does... Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, make... Okay, good. So it's a motion to withdraw this form A without prejudice and eventually replace with another one, which we will approve, so... Want to second that, Michael? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next one, Jean, in the case of 1046 Grapevine Road, Ruttig Estates. There's a continued subdivision plan, and there's also a new application for a watershed special permit. What I'd like to do is, the clerk... You want to be clerk? Who's the clerk? You could be the clerk. Can you read that note?
Starting from here?
Yeah.
Okay. Dear Chairman Simons and other board members, on behalf of the applicant Mark E. Ruttig, we are respectively requesting the board to continue the pending definitive subdivision hearing. In addition, we are requesting the board to open the watershed special permit hearing and to immediately continue the same without taking testimony. The purpose of the continuance is to enable the applicant to work out several remaining issues in connection with an abutting land over. We request both hearings be continued to the board's next scheduled meeting on March 17, 2015. We are confident we can work these issues out well in advance of the board's next meeting.
Okay.
Sincerely, John T. Smallick.
Good. Does Smallick have anything to add to that, or is that basically...
That's basically it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a meeting, actually, tomorrow, where we're going to try to work on any last remaining issues, so we hope to have, as I said in the letter, we just hope to have everything finalized and ready for discussion at the next meeting.
So for the record, the record should state that we have officially opened the watershed special permit, even though we haven't taken any testimony, so... Anybody have any comments or questions? I think we could just move through that, so... And we don't even need to vote, actually, because it's just a regular meeting, and we'll do it next time. So, yeah, if it does look like there's going to be any delay, let's get the further, you know, extension in hand by the time of the meeting. Hopefully, we can work it out, you know, that night, but... Yeah, yeah, okay. Okay. So that's Ruttig Estates. The next item is Bradstreet School and its discussion, potential amendments that they would like to make, you know. They're really modifications if we were to make any changes, so... But...
Good evening. Thank you for making time for this. The... As you all know, we received a special permit on this project last month, and we had publicly stated the interest in dividing the parcel, both in two phases, but also, we had the intention of doing an A&R of the residential portion and the commercial portion separately. And it... Effectively, there's two buildings on one parcel of land presently. Part of the confusion came in, and we apologize to the board for this confusion, because we had two surveys, professional surveys on the property that we were working off of. And Hancock was the one most established. This was in your file records and so forth. But we also had one from Serge and Christiansen. They both showed an R4 zone separation from the GB zone. And we have placed our residential in the R4, the commercial in the GB, and we had plans to subdivide. And it's just one of those things where we were, for the past year, financing-wise, it's... We were very close to finalizing our financing on the residential building. It's a rental apartment. Bradstreet Partners intends to hold this building. And then, in turn, we're marketing the commercial building and potentially doing commercial condos as well as commercial leases. And the idea of separating the two buildings and lots assists in our financing goals and just make it simpler to finance them separately, and we are building them separately. The issue that we've discovered in recent weeks of going forward with the A&R plan that the surveyor's plans were incorrect. The entire parcel had been rezoned as a GB, and it's all in downtown overlay district. But then it became difficult setting up two separate zones, because now we're short on frontage by approximately six feet, and...
I figured that's where you were going with this.
Yeah, and I mean, it's an irregular-shaped lot. And then, you know, we had the place we had indicated, I mean, we have, it's a requirement of 25,000 square feet, which we do have, you know, more than 50 square feet. You know, it made sense to kind of divide the parcel per the parking configuration, which is also in line with this property border. That brings, you know, our square footage on this parcel is, it's like 23,600. And, you know, we're looking for your guidance and consideration. The plan hasn't changed, you know. It's all in the spirit and intent of what we presented. You know, the selectmen approved this development concept as the most preferable development, you know, when they were selling Bradstreet School. We've now purchased Bradstreet School. And, you know, ideally, we would like to be able to subdivide the parcels for ease of financing as well as ease of creating a condo development here and a separate, single-owned entity there. You know, it does, you know, reviewing the downtown overlay district, the planning board has the right, you know, to, with Section 18.7, and I have the downtown overlay language here, you know, which essentially, you have special, you know, permit granting authority for waivers of limited dimensional design and other criteria set forth in Sections 18.3 through 18.6, Dante and Overlay District. And, you know, effectively, it's, you know, notwithstanding anything contrary to zoning bylaw, no waiver shall be granted for building height, and we're not asking for that.
I will admit to being... I mean, at one level, I understand what you're trying to do, because it could potentially be a cleaner conveyance. But from another perspective, it doesn't make any sense to me, what you're trying to do, because what you're doing is, you're creating a self-created zoning variance in this case by creating, splitting the lot into two parcels. It doesn't make any sense to me why you'd want to do that, why you want to create a zoning violation on your own. And I think it makes the situation a little bit messier, potentially, in terms of if there's separate parcels, what's to prevent somebody from putting up a fence between the two parcels and restricting access and so forth? I mean, there's all sorts of...
There'd definitely be crosseasements that would be established. It's still...
I mean, we've run into this situation... We've run into this situation all the time, where we have, you know, multiple buildings when it's a partial. I mean, most large commercial developments have that phenomenon, and it's a phenomenon that exists, you know, just about everywhere in town. And I don't understand why that creates a huge problem for you, because it's pretty much the norm that, you know, you run into on any large commercial property. I mean, look, at Butcher Boy, we just did that. We didn't carve the thing into two separate lots. Right next to Butcher Boy, we got multiple buildings. It just feels a very awkward solution to your problem. I don't get why this creates such a big problem for you. Is this the only thing you want to do, or is there other stuff you want to do?
Yeah, that is it. I mean, it's just...
I'm sorry, aren't you going to move the driveway? Isn't that another issue?
Well, we have... We are talking about... We don't have the formal agreement. We have an agreement of principle, verbal, to combine the two parking entrances, or the driveway entrances off of Main Street. And that, we felt it was premature to bring that in front of you, but... And that is a, you know, relatively minor revision, and it's something that the downtown overlay encourages, you know, turn two adjacent entry points off of the main artery of Main Street into one. And so that would be with the crosseasement.
That's fine.
You're correct. But we also had wanted the sidewalk through, when you said you couldn't fit it because of the driveway side, so that'd be something, if you are going to get a driveway over here, we'd want a sidewalk for the residential units to get over to Main... Out to Main Street. That was one of the arguments for not having a sidewalk from the residential units out back to get out to, straight out to Main Street along the side.
Well, I understood... I heard that, you know, the preference on your behalf of doing that, but at the time, there wasn't like a either-or proposition.
Well, there was no discussion saying you were going to move the driveway either. That was never brought up, about moving the driveway over and that...
Well, and we weren't changing the building footprint, you know, in our studies of doing it. We're simply improving this situation. We're keeping the same setbacks, you know. There's other issues involved in putting a five-foot sidewalk from front to back. I mean, we're going to lose a couple parking spaces, probably, and if not four. But so it's not... You know, I think we could study that further, but that wasn't... One, I didn't find them directly related as much.
They weren't related, because you didn't have the opportunity before about the driveway being moved, yeah?
Right. And that recently, you know, we started and stopped conversations with them several times in the last six months, until we have a...
So if you can move it, will we then get the sidewalk?
That, I mean, that's to be determined. I mean, it's... I think that will come with the application. I'm not in the position to, you know, to negotiate something that's not even in front of you. It... I mean, but definitely, we would review it and see if that could happen. But we don't even have a formal agreement, so...
Do you have the needed setbacks from the commercial property to the residential property that you'd need, doing a... Doing subdividing a lot? Because you need to... Actually, I think the part... I think the downtown overlay requires the commercial lot to have a fence and a five-foot barrier of screening, so you wouldn't have that. I think you're creating... I think it is more waivers you would need, and the...
Well, yeah, I mean, it's a messy situation, because it's a totality. I mean, it's, frankly speaking, one property, and why you would want to carve it up is...
Pull the solid off the front.
It doesn't make any sense to me. Well, the problem is, you create a lot that's too small. You can't create a zoning violation.
Well, no, well, we can make it. The size, we can make... I mean, this can move six feet, and we have a 25,000-square-foot lot. That's not an issue.
Do we have a 25,000 in each?
In both, yes, we do. We have over 50,000.
The application came in for 90...
49,000, and the special permit says approximately 49,000, although the assessor card says 1.15 acres. So it does come out to just over 50, but the paperwork doesn't have that.
Yeah, when we... Our... Yeah, I mean, certainly, on our survey, it was larger. I thought if it wasn't... Should be written on here somewhere, but I know it was over, by the professional land surveyor, it was over 50,000. And it is an irregular-shaped lot, and I know that's a part of the criteria.
It has nothing to do with size, an irregular-shaped lot. Size is size.
Well, no, no, I'm not talking about size. I'm talking about, the only real issue here is frontage.
And you don't have the frontage either. It's a self-created variance. You can't... You're not suffering a hardship, because it's a self-inflicted hardship.
You know, again, you know, that's where I feel like the, you know, the irregular-shaped lot is...
It's not irregular-shaped. It's as close to perfectly rectangular as you possibly could think.
It's not rectilinear, and, you know, the interesting thing was, is we proceeded all this time, and of course, you know, it is what it is, but we... And in R4 zone, which is what we thought, all the way up to our approvals of this past month...
Again, the application is for...
General business lot, one lot within general business and within the downtown overlay. The plan has general business. I know you're referring to an R4.
On the table, the plans say general business and resident four, R4 district. And we even, on their table, we had, you know, in R4, it's a 100-foot block width.
Do you have your setbacks? I mean, I don't think you have your setbacks. Do you have your parking requirements on each of the lots individually now? Do you have your setbacks on each of the lots for the building and everything else, in the parking setbacks? I think it's... I think you have more issues than just that one line and that one variance on frontage, because if you have a commercial property abutting a residential property, you need different setbacks now. Those, you didn't come to us with those. I mean, that... You can't have the parking along, necessarily, along that... You're supposed to have a border and screening, you know? That's the whole point. But if it's one lot, you can do it. You're the same ownership. When you're not the same owner in the same lot, in the same property, you can't do it. I mean, you're creating... You're creating more than just one issue there.
And you're only trying to do this for conveyance purposes, or...
Well, yeah, it's for financing as well as, you know, for the structure of doing a commercial condominium.
So you don't have your financing in place yet?
We do. We do on the residential, and we're marketing the commercial side.
So you're just going to sell off the commercial to another ownership?
Well, we're, you know, I'm hoping to...
If you condo-wise it, you're going to, regardless of whether the lot's smaller or larger, you're still going to have fundamentally the same, you know, condominium-type structure. I mean, you're...
No, we're not trying to change anything with the plan that's been approved.
That's the problem, though. You'd have to, because it's going to be... The front's going to be condos, and you're keeping the back as apartments. The condo owners aren't going to let the residential people park on their property.
You can certainly do that with crosseasements and so forth. Of course you can.
But that's not what got proposed. I think you're opening Pandora's box with this. I mean, I really do think you're... I think you're creating a zoning variation for something that doesn't need to get changed anyway, other than for your financing purposes. And it seems to me that you're, from a financing perspective, you should be able to figure out a way around that anyway. I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I'm certain there are legal ways of... And financially structuring laws and so forth.
So... I mean, unless there's something that we haven't talked about, I... At least, my personal opinion is, I don't think it's a good idea. I think it creates more problems than, from our point of view, than it solves.
I agree. Well, the intention, again, was to come, you know, before this was the discussion, and we'll review it further, and if we feel reason to, we'll come back to discuss it further.
Yeah, I mean, feel pretty... I could... There's something that we missed. I mean, we're not trying to be unfair to you. We don't want to create a huge problem for you, but we just... I think from a planning point of view, from what we've seen so far, it's problematic, so... Appreciate you coming in, though.
Okay, very good. Thank you for your time.
So is there any specific procedure that they would follow if they want to come back or come back for another discussion?
Well, I think they'd have to come back with a modification.
A modification to the site plan review.
To the... Yeah. And that's it. And that opens, as Lynn says...
Would it be almost a new...
Almost like a new...
I think they'd have to notice the neighbors. I mean, to get parking and all that stuff was...
For a modification, you would notice the neighbors.
Yeah, you would have to. It's almost like a completely new hearing. Yeah. You can't just wave it away, you know? So...
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Downtown Overlay District, Sub-District Day. His Stark Mill area. Is that what we're calling it? It has a poetic ring to it.
That's what we have. Proposed, so we're...
Yeah. Yeah.
That's what we have, proposed, so we're, um-
Yeah, I don't know, it's, you know, maybe a little alliteration or something, you know?
The historic mill area captures the fact that it, there's certainly the historic mills, but there's additional build-out to be done in these lots, so it encompasses the area in general.
So, uh, I guess, where do we stand in?
So, we have had, um, an additional working group meeting, and I think at this point, we have really, um, fine-tuned language that does address what I expressed as a concern last time, is a transition from either go one way or the other, from the mill buildings into a residential neighborhood, and conversely, the residential neighborhood transitioning in terms of height and scale towards the mill buildings. Um, one, one specific piece we worked on was the heights of buildings, um, so I don't know if you want to go over that one in somewhat detail.
Let, do you want to?
Um, yes, I mean, one, one concern we had was, of course, the heights of the building, you know, um, they're allowed 55 by right in most of the area, they're not allowed 55 feet in the residential, but where the residential splits the lots, they can go 100 feet after. And then there was the discussion on the 70 feet where the Converse building is approximately 70 feet, gentlemen?
Sixty-five to 70.
Yeah, yeah. Um, that may, they wanted to be able to do it, but my concern was always that we didn't want a 70-foot building near the residential on High Street or on the corner of Walker Road or, you know, near the residential units. So, they came up with some new language, I think works. I think the only buildings that they'd want to do it is right next to a building of similar height and some, similar elevation, so you'll see under section 8.8, 0.6, 0.2, that it has to be within 50, let's see, is that the right one? Yeah, within 50 feet of a structure existing on or before the adoption of the subsection, so they can't add a new building, then go off of that new building, you know, height, and then it has to be no more than 200 feet from that structure. So, that's going to limit it to the existing mill area. It's not going to put them in those out parcels that were missed out of the original downtown overlay. So, I think that's pretty much covered. Um, and then, we looked at Sutton Pond, we had originally put the setbacks back a little farther from Sutton Pond, but I went down and looked at the property, and Sutton Pond does have a row of arbites, chain-link fence, and parking along that side. So, I think they have enough of a buffer for the, for the standard setbacks on that side. And actually, if one of the, um, one of you can, um, the, the, um, there's a line of, um, power lines. Do those go to Sutton Street?
They, there, one line goes, uh, straight and hits Sutton Street, and the other line actually bends and goes sort of towards the airport.
Okay.
Subtransmission lines, national grid.
But those would need to be moved, part, pretty much, for anything done?
It depends. We're doing discussions with national grid now. Uh, there's a lot of history about various easements entitled, we're trying to sort out with them. Uh, in principle, we believe that we could do some development with them in their current location, and obviously, it'd be preferable if we could change that, but, you know, that's-
Okay. Uh, I mean, I, I, I know that's a constraint anyway, I mean, it's above and beyond the zoning, certainly to the extent that, you know, we can help you in the town, uh, they owe us some stuff, uh, so.
Yeah, because they're sort of right in the middle of, you know, because I was looking, I was like-
You know, I mean, eh, eh, again, if it's a constraint that could be eliminated, I'm sure you, gives you a lot more flexibility if you can move things around, so we ought to, before giving up on that option, you ought to bring us into the mix if you run into a problem, so.
Because I think otherwise, it would push it closer to the High Street, Thorne Dyke Road residences, if you have to avoid those power lines, right? You know?
Hey, do you want to address the question? Here, I'll come up to the, the mic, just in case people are listening in. David Steinberg from RSG. There, there are a number of easements besides the power lines. The power lines from, for whatever reason over their history, are, are in a certain kind of easement that also requires them to be undergrounded at some point. Some of them are outside the easement they were originally supposed to be in, so there's a number of problems with those lines, and I think one of the things we're discussing is that we're, we're trying to establish, you know, reasonable borders at each end of the zone, so that, you know, hopefully, we could do development if they were there or not there. But certainly, we've been working with them for almost a year on trying to figure out what could be the disposition of those lines, that we could, you know, preferably underground the whole thing, and be able to create a road, and then align the easements with where they're supposed to be, because we're working off a sewer easement, we're working off of, um, a couple, you know, there's an easement into the Sutton Pond condominiums that comes to the site. There's a number of things we're trying to work around and still do a reasonably dense development where there could be contact between buildings and not have to be open spans of parking lots or other things, that would be.
They're a nice source, or anything you have leverage, you know?
Yeah.
Because they're sort of, they're not, they're mismatched, too. They're not, they're not a-
Yeah, it's strange, I'm not sure how, by what process.
Well, is it sort of a vestige of a prior era? I mean, is that really what it, you know?
There's two different, they go two different ways, it looks like, yeah.
There are easements that even go into the 80s of certain agreements-
Oh, really? Okay.
Having to do with those lines for temporary, you know, some of them were supposed to be there temporarily, which explains why they're kind of rickety.
Because they mismatch, yeah, it's not a straight line that you would expect going through.
And, even, and, you know, those lines have changed hands. It was Mass Electric, and it was things before that, and those original easements were tied to a railroad easement that was really over land that had been granted by Davidson Ferber on an easement to the railroad for certain uses. So, the railroad, you know, theoretically couldn't have transferred, couldn't have granted an easement to Mass Electric in the first place. And Mass Electric took that easement and did other things, and then a new easement was granted for temporary lines at one point. It's a real mess that we're trying to sort out, sort of independent anyway of the zoning, but, uh, we would, we would like to clean all that stuff up, and if, certainly if we can get the support of the town and trying to get those taken care of, it would be helpful, because there's a big bureaucracy we're, we're dealing with there.
National grid, not the town.
Yeah, national grid.
Is it going to be a 30%, 27% increase, or should be a little more?
Yeah, one would think, yeah, one would think.
And the other thing, you know, language we put in to try to protect the residences, um, one thing is High Street does pretty much overlook the top of most of those properties, um, but we put it in under H on 8.8.5, 18.8.5. New development shall transition in height, density, scale, intensity, and use from the existing mill, mill buildings surrounding neighborhoods abutting the sub-district. So, as they get closer to the residents, we'll expect them to step down, you know, and not have as much dens, yeah.
That's good, so you get, I think partly, having something that's a statement of intent as well as something specific is probably a good idea, so.
So, I think that pretty much works.
So, you, all in all, you were happy with what we have?
Yeah, I think we just need town council to review it, you know, and maybe, uh, fine-tune a couple of minor points, but, uh, I think it's pretty, pretty bare.
I agree.
So, why don't we do that? And it's, we already have a placeholder, right, in the warrant?
We're all pending this approval that I intended to submit.
And we need the map, too, right?
So, I also left you drafts of two map articles. Um, we have a situation, I think I discussed it a few months ago, but what I have discovered on the existing zoning map within the downtown overlay, some parcels that were originally approved, um, have dropped off, so the, I think it's the one you have in your hand, John. If you look at the pink, I have to find it on here, but, um, so I've included the gray, which was the original one from 2009 town meeting, and the internet is really slow tonight, I apologize. Um, so, the gray was what was originally designed, and what I've included is parcels that are no longer hashed in the downtown overlay that need to be corrected, so I used that as a separate map amendment to make those corrections. Okay?
So, uh-
So-
So, you're saying this thing from 2009-
That's the original-
That is what it is.
Yep, that's what it should be. That, that, that's what it should be, and then there was some-
But that's what we approved at town meeting.
Yes, yep.
Right.
And so, since then, if you go to the next page, you see just the red highlights there. At this, this is where the fork in the road at Main Street, where you come up to St. Michael's Church, the church in the corner first.
Right, yeah, 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 yeah.
These, these, once shaded in pink, are no longer on the zoning map, is within the downtown overlay.
But that is a-
So, if you look at the-
I guess my, my comment would be, is that because somebody made it a mistake?
It appears in 2013 that there were some adjustments made to the zoning, um, map for, it was at the same time that the Dunkin' Donuts parcel got rezoned to general business from I-2, so there was-
But not in this area.
Not in this area at all, but my understanding at the time, Judy had an intern in that was just fixing some lot line adjustments for where the overlay, like, just crept over, they were fixing it.
Right, but my point ends up being is, that's a clerical error, that's different than going to town meeting and changing something. If, if, if it's only a clerical error, you can just change it right back, you don't have to go to town.
It was voted on the way it is, with those excluded now.
Well, that's my, that's what I wanted to find out. Are you saying that we did actually have a zoning map in 2013 that we voted and approved at town meeting?
Yes, yes.
It's completely re-conified.
Okay.
The zoning map is re-conified to take all the old prior amendments and compile them, so you have a, a brand-new zoning map that's supposed to show everything.
Supposed to clean everything up, but it obviously created some-
It actually created this-
So, yeah, so we do have to correct it, then?
And I just stumbled upon it, looking at a parcel down here, and it just didn't look right, and so then I went back to find out what it was supposed to be. Um, so it does appear to be in error, but there was a zoning article that set the zoning map as of 2013, so that is what's printed today and on our website today. So, I just drafted it as an article to try to-
So, we have to do, we have to fix that, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. So, there would be, the first one is to amend it, to put these parcels back in, then what's the second?
The second one then would be to create the sub-district A.
Okay.
I'm trying to find that one.
This is the sub-district, right?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, you might just make sure you label it as something, you don't want to label both of them exactly the same.
Okay, I'll look at it, yeah, I just, I just got to this today, but-
You want to call it something different, otherwise it'll create a little bit of confusion.
And what I want, oh, I still have to work through confirmation here, in terms of that railroad right-of-way, I want to make sure that I'm reflecting it accurately here, where it ends within the sub-district A. Um, so I-
Yeah, we have, um, this looks like it's pretty close, there's one, the only, um, question, I think it's sort of de minimis, is either the town's or ours, and a certain extension of the railroad parcel that has historically, our survey cuts not quite so far up the brook-
Okay.
-from our latest survey, and I think we've issued that, and that, we've had this discussion with, with the town before, I think with, with Judy Time, when she was there as a planner, when she was trying to figure out the bike path, like, who owns this particular run, is either the town or us.
Yeah, I just-
And someone in the middle, so I don't think, I think it's probably safer to include it in case it's part of the parcel, but we, we're not counting in, in the way, we, we did our permitting before as ours, it's just on, it's, you know, it's wetlands around the brook within close proximity there. So, that, that's the only, maybe we want to clarify that-
Yeah, I just-
-if there's something else, but either way, it doesn't do any harm with this picture, so we're, we're fine with it.
Okay. Okay, so, I, I definitely have to fine-tune that, just make sure that's right, and then, for now, it can definitely go in as a placeholder, and then we might have to fine-tune it.
Yeah, okay, let's just make sure, so it's going to be three articles, put it as a placeholder, send it to, um, to town council.
Four articles, because we got to rescind that temporary waiver on the downtown overlay.
Yeah, okay, it doesn't automatically, uh-
Well, after two years, but that's what they're, they were coming in under, too. That wouldn't have even been brought up.
So, on this one-
Was last year we did two years?
Yeah, last year we did two years.
So, well, we definitely have to get rid of that, then.
Yeah. Well, on this one, I included deleting those as part of-
Oh.
Oh, okay.
This language, I deleted those.
So, if you've done it as part of that, then you don't need it.
Yeah, so that's just incorporating all of it as one article.
Oh, that works, yeah.
That's good, that's better.
Yeah, that's just clean.
The only other question, I just want to make sure everybody is comfortable, you want to delete all waivers, you don't want to leave any waiver provisions in-
In the downtown overlay?
Yeah.
That we added, I don't think so.
Okay, I just, I just want to make sure-
No, whatever this, I guess, the, what we're doing now is an additional section?
Yep. It's not a new section, it's a continuation of the downtown overlay, but it's called a subsection, once you get to 8.8.
Oh, it's fine, but my point is that the language would say, add the following at the end. If you're going to amend anything that's above that, you, you have to write your article in such a way that it begins with the amending piece, and then after that, adds the new piece.
I would consider amend the downtown overlay district in total, in, in total, we are adding another sec, like a-
Right, you're adding, but my, my point is that I think what you're doing is you're amending some existing language, and then you're adding new language. Just make sure the article reflects both, yeah?
Okay.
Because sometimes we've got, you know, you have to be very prescriptive, you can see this, because it's like, you know, two years later, well, what did we actually approve?
Yep.
You know, so we want to be very exact with it, so. So, as long as we do that, we should be fine. You, you see where I'm getting at there?
Yeah, yeah, you can go, you can go either way, but that's fine, I mean-
Yeah, yeah, just as long as it, it covers 100% of what we want to cover, so if you could look at it a separate set of eyes, would actually be helpful.
Sure.
Make sure we get it right, yeah, yeah.
And then, one final question on it. The public hearing for zoning articles, typically, we don't notify the abutters, we've had some precedents that in the past, when we did the CDD, I think, two and three, or one and two, where we did notify them. Is it something with your preference, would you?
I don't think there's any harm in having more transparency here. I doubt if anybody will come, but maybe they will.
So, just need regular mail-in, not certified, just a notice? Okay. Okay.
So, the only people that actually, if you are within the dis, the statutory distance, you would be notified?
It would be 300 feet on a, um, like a site plan review application, but for at-town meeting zoning articles, there's no requirement.
Go back and check, because I'm not sure that if you're directly impacted, whether you, maybe I'm wrong, I may be wrong, but-
Yeah, okay, I'll double-check that, but-
Just make sure there's not a statutory requirement, that we have to notify people within a certain distance.
Yep.
Yeah.
And so, if all goes on schedule, my thought was a, the legal zoning notice would go in the paper on March 24th and 3/31 for a public hearing on April 7th, which would allow three meetings prior to town meeting.
That's fine.
Okay.
Just make sure you're tied in with Joyce, that it's actually in the warrant and everything, and how we explain it, yeah.
Yeah. That's it.
Great. Pete?
Does anyone have any other comments?
My only questions, I think, when I responded to you, was the traffic flow down High Street, at the top of the hill, where I play chicken with the people coming down, uh, Long Street and coming up Water Street, and then I, once I'm sure that I've got the, the other guys bluffed out, there'll be somebody coming up the hill. That's a, you know, that's a perfect place for a traffic circle, but I don't know how you would get one there, but it's an accident waiting to happen. And as you get more and more, you know, traffic at odd times, I have the same question about down at the Prescott Street end, where people coming down High Street make a left turn onto Prescott, when I'm stopped, where the stop sign is, and could clip me, and then the speed people go on High Street, up and, up and down that hill.
There's a few things, um, when we did the East Mill permitting, obviously, we did a lot of what we hoped to be good traffic coming, I think it's been pretty successful for the most part on High Street, adding the parking there and the lanes a little bit. We never really, at that time, we'd made some recommendations about the High Street and Water Street intersection, um, that, that, those didn't come to fruition, do, for a number of reasons. There is, the town's working on the alignment of High Street and Water Street that I think will help, which will increase, uh, and, and actually, we've even reserved some of the land on our corner to help buffer that. Um, I guess it's the southwest, or no, of, of the street, it's the northwest corner, where you're coming up the hill and how your visibility is to the right, or coming in Water Street and looking down to the left at the mills. and looking down to the left at the mills. And there's a street alignment project and improving the crossings there and the, and the sightlines for cars, that I think will continue to help that intersection, I think adding one more stop sign, a three-way stop instead of the two-way stop that's there. No, but we've been cooperating, we've been working with the engineers that have been working for the town on cleaning that up, because that has been an ongoing, you know, just long before we were here, coming up high and intersecting with water is tricky. We haven't taken a close look at Prescott Street, and I know there's, there's a memorial there, or a monument there on a centerpiece as Prescott comes down and goes two different directions. I think it's a little, I can understand that's a little tricky, and maybe as we, as we look at our master plan, whether there's something that would make sense to straighten that out or simplify that, or make, you know, one way's there, but.
Did discussion come as in terms of, we'll have to look at crosswalks and appropriateness of those as this becomes developed?
I mean, everybody in the downtown area, myself included, you know, we don't cross at a crosswalk, we just jet across. But the traffic isn't going at the same speed as the traffic is on High Street.
Yeah, High Street still moves faster. And we have the bump out in front of Jamie's as well, which I think helps. But there's also, there's been some erosion over the years of the crosswalks that were there, and I think as we continued and get the new street lighting in and get the street repaved, there's a bunch of work we did on the street, and then there was, they had to replace a gas line after that, you know, so like every time you do something, something else gets undone. This winter's not going to help because the plow's coming down, I think of continually erode at whatever crosswalks were there. But I think as the next step on high and water is that street improvements are coming there, and as we propose any development work that would come off more toward the Prescott Street intersection, we could talk also about if there's ways to calm that down a little bit.
Okay. Thank you. All right. What else we got, Jane?
All right, so the conservation department had obtained a grant to implement some forest management on Osgood Hill, bring up the locust there.
Just cut trees in a systematic way?
Yes. So this red circle kind of encompasses the area. The, that driveway is to the Stevens Estate, so it's right at that rail bend, that hairpin bend there, just inside off of that. The grant was received, it was presented to the conservation department, they're certainly in support of this. The area work is well more than 400 feet from the lake, but it is within 325 feet of a wetland, so it, that's the non-discharge zone. The, the only thing that requires a permit within the non-discharge would be any surface or subsurface discharge included, but not limited to stormwater runoff, drainage on any roadway, that type of thing. So it's a discharge of stormwater. So Jennifer just wanted to make sure that you are aware of this project. There was a similar one on Wire Hill in the past.
That's fine.
Whether you need to waive it formally or whether.
I don't think we need to do anything. I mean, I, I trust her judgment that they'll, you know, prevent a disaster.
Technically, I don't think it would require a permit, but she just wanted to make sure you're aware of the program.
They've been doing this for a while, haven't they?
They did it. Well, speaking on the Wire Hill area.
You're thinking of something completely different. They had to take down a bunch of things because of the ashbore or whatever that thing was.
So that was just north of here.
Yeah.
Okay. I think you can see it on the map, isn't that that brown area?
Yeah, it'd be right over here, in here. So, yeah, that, separate project, but she just wanted to make sure everybody was aware, and they want to start while the ground's frozen, so they would like to start by the end of this month.
The ground's going to be frozen for the next six months.
I know. We'll be optimistic, I think.
Already minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the February 17, 2015 meeting minutes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? And a motion to adjourn, unless there's anything else?
It will be adjourned.
Let me second.
All in favor? Great, excellent.